Blessings. We'd like to give a moment of silence, which no one has done here today, for the mayor of the West Side, Reverend Flowers, who have hit the dope pit and worked with genuine care and concern regarding education on the West Side and the South Side here in the city of Chicago. We'd like to acknowledge him. I want to say, Ms. Bennet, Ms. Barbara Bennet, you come into the city and you requested the public trust. And I'm an individual, and several of us, we trust individuals until they give us a reason not to. And I have to say here today that you have proved yourself to be untrustworthy. We were hoping that you would come in and not just bring change, because change without improvements is a waste of time, a waste of energy, and it defeats the purpose. I was the first caller for the public participation at eight o'clock. I left that time, 8:01 and 8:04, with three of your secretaries for public participation here. There's no way I should have been number 32 on the list, but I know that I ended up being number 32 on the list so that the media would be gone by the time it was that I was to participate in this process. Let me also state that it's hard for us to trust you and even take this board seriously because you continue to play games.
Excuse me, Queen Sister.
With the lives of, yes, with the lives of other people. And I say that to, excuse me, the game you're playing here, there's no reason for these individuals to be padding seats on public dollars. There's, I'm sure there's something better that they want to do. There's something else that they should be doing. It's clear that you're not making the parents of the children of Chicago Public Schools priority, because if you did, they wouldn't be over the overhaul, you know? And we know that no one is going to take us serious until we get serious. I want you to understand also that there are those of us out here that know that the utilization process is a destabilizing process, and it's the last phase of the gentrification process. Closing unperforming schools, if that's the case, without a corrective active plan in place, then we ought to just close police stations for not fighting the crime and the violence that's taking place in the street. Let me just say, because you don't want to be serious, Barbara, I've got 13-year-olds dropping X, from 13 to 18, dropping X and sipping lean in these streets, and it starts in the educational facilities. And I'm coming to you because everybody in this room know it's going to be very difficult if you're serious about doing something in these streets.
Next speaker, please. Sylvester Hendricks.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Sylvester Hendricks, followed by Speaker 33, Lawrence Legus, followed by Speaker number 34, please.
I have been a community leader and a child advocate for higher quality public education and safety for more than 20 years. Charter schools should be accountable and transparent, shouldn't be given a pass just because they are schools. To the contrary, because they are funded by taxpayers, they deserve heightened scrutiny of their finances and educational outcomes. I'm urging the Chicago Board of Education to put together a pro bono independent forensic auditors with subpoena powers to audit current politically connected charter operators with fiscal reporting failures. Enough is enough. Taxpayers deserve and demand accountability. Do your work before you vote for, before you vote to approve the opening of more charter schools. Put a one-year delay on CPS school closings. Put it into a Spirit charter school and other shady organization, switching out management and board members while continuing political nepotism. A Spirit charter school is under a cloud of corruption and has demonstrated nothing but failure when it comes to education and fiscal reporting. A Spirit survives, thrives, and expands due to its political cloud with politicians such as State Senator Iris Martinez. State Senator Iris Martinez's character and credibility is in question with her conflict of interest as a member of the Commission on School Utilization and deeply entrenched ties to her friends at a Spirit charter schools. The Chicago Board of Education has a duty to the taxpayers of Illinois and, more importantly, to the students of Chicago.
Mr. Legus, excuse me.
By allowing a Spirit, yes.
Mr. Legus, thank you. Can you please conclude?
By allowing a Spirit to continue to irresponsible financial management and educational malfeasance under the cloud of corruption, the board is shrinking its responsibility and duty.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Our next speaker then is Speaker 34, Jenny Biggs, followed by Speaker number 35, Eve Angel Yanubian, and then Speaker number 36, Bonita Robinson.
My name is Jenny Biggs. I am a CPS parent of three at Mark Sheridan Academy. I am also a member of Raise Your Hand. Today, we are presenting information on our findings about the CPS space utilization formula. A Raise Your Hand parent discovered that the formula CPS is using is flawed. The formula allows for 36 kids in a homeroom, which really skews the numbers on reporting overcrowding and underutilization. This parent has found that overcrowded schools are underreported and underutilized schools are overreported. A school can be labeled as efficient with 36 students in every homeroom. On the flip side, a school can be labeled as underutilized with 24 students in every homeroom. In the 2011-12 school year in Illinois, the mean average homeroom size was 21.9 for grades kindergarten through eighth grade. By using the flawed CPS formula, our underutilized schools have more students enrolled per hor- excuse me, homeroom than the average Illinois school. If the CPS formula is adjusted to have the maximum capacity of 30 students per homeroom, the district does not have anywhere close to 100,000 empty seats. The number moves to 24,957 empty seats. We know that in order to avoid class sizes of 36, principals have to choose to cut their ancillary classrooms. We know 36 kids in a classroom is very rare, but, yes.
Ms. Biggs, excuse me, can you please conclude?
You bet.
Thank you.
But this is a bad choice for our principals to have to make. This was presented Friday night to Horner Park by Raise Your Hand. Frank Clark does not refute our data, and we're wondering with all the underutilization talk going on today, why this formula is even still being used today on Wednesday. That was not me. Thank you. You have all the paperwork.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Eve Angel Yanubian.
Good afternoon. I invite you all to kick the K-word habit. A kid is an animal beast. A child is a human being, person entitled to a gender identity, to be called males and females. We call dogs boys and girls. We can respect the rights of children. I was saddened to hear about the murders in Connecticut, but I was glad to hear the President of the United States acknowledge the corners of Chicago. Media people are saying that Chicago murders are separate because it's an unparenting issue, because the mayor of this city raised the issue, who is raising you? Who is raising the children of America? Yesterday marked the 147th anniversary of the signing of the 13th Amendment that abolished slavery in America and throughout its territory, except when you're convicted of a crime and become a recycled slave through incarceration, and there's no emancipation from that. As a crime against humanity descendant and survivor of unjust laws of segregation, Jim Crowe genocide, we as a people were raised by slave owners with bullwhips. Today, police officers use billy clubs, and the parents' hot hands are tied because they can no longer be honored through biblical principles. Hurt people hurt other people. You change the brain, you change the behavior.
Excuse me, Ms. Yanubian, can you please conclude?
Thank you.
Thank you.
In conclusion, as a certified Montessori educator who educates the subconscious brains of children under the age of four through the nine senses, I have a love approach to learning initiative that comes with an educational manual to teach children violence is a virus. Don't catch it, don't spread it. You change the brain, you change the behavior. My question, how can I get this solution at the top stage before the board so that it can be distributed throughout the preschools in the city of Chicago and stop the violence?
Thank you, Ms. Yanubian.
Thank you, please. Our next speaker then is Speaker number 36.
I didn't hear my question answered. "Thank you" is not an answer to my question. I'm an expert in the area of when you change the brain, you change the behavior.
Our next speaker, please, is Speaker number 36, Bonita Robinson, followed by Speaker 38, William Scott.
Good afternoon. My name is Bonita Robinson. First of all, I'd like to thank the citizens of the state of Illinois, city of Chicago, and especially to the Ellington community, especially particularly the beautiful, 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 brilliant black children that I've taught for the past 39 years, well, 39 of the past 40 years. I'm recently retired, but I stay abreast of the board meetings, and recently my daughter, who recently graduated from University of Chicago, heard some of your comments, board members' comments, to people coming, asking about the closing of schools. And she said, Mom, do they really know how bad their policies are affecting the students that you teach? Because she has seen how I made sure she got a good education, and therefore came and tried to give my children the same kind. And I have, you have a packet, and please read everything in it. I do have an essay called "Urban School Reform: The Movement to Stop the Closing of the Achievement Gap," and has books in there too that I'm sure some of you have read before, but basically in my first 20 years of teaching, the achievement gap was closed. That's in the flat world, the book that you have there. When I say it was closed, it closed dramatically. It went from a distance of 53 points, black, white, down to, from 1971 to 88, to almost like 18 points. In the last 20 years, and you'll see that in your packet also, we had a headline saying, no real progress in reading in the past 20 years.
Ms. Robinson, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, I will conclude. So basically what I'm trying to say is, the children that I teach and the children whose schools are tend, who tend to, you know, to be closed, have proven that they can learn. They chose, they helped to close the, excuse me, the reading gap was being closed, and then when school reform came, it stopped, you know? And one of the basic suggestions, and I'm just going to, and I know I have to close, but on the seven, the 10 recommendations that I have there, one of the books that goes with that is this, Dibbles, that's taking a lot of the time. I know the reason why the gap started, you know, it started widening again.
Ms. Robinson, thank you.
Okay. Just let me tell them about the jelly beans. The reason the jelly beans are in here is because all the things that we can't do anymore, we test, 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 and Dibbles is one of the biggest, mindless things that our children are doing. So please remember that the gap was being closed, and this has been a failed experiment. I know you're close, I know it's over.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, William Scott, followed by Speaker 39, Ernestine Stanbury.
Well, holiday greetings. It's always a test of my dedication to the cause to participate in a very interesting democratic process. But it's been quite an interesting morning, but let me not burn up my brief seconds. Good news, President Vitale and Dr. Bird Bennett. In regards to two agenda items, the first one being the effort to get the Board of Education's own honorary student rep to the second inauguration of President Barack Obama, yesterday's interactions with my pastor, Byron Brazier of Apostolic Church, we would like him to chair that community corporate grassroots effort to not only just have your honorary student representative go, but the city colleges, Zameka Hampton, who represents the seven city colleges, to have her attend also. And my appearance before their Board of Trustees parallels these two efforts. He is starting in October. So that's underway as we speak, and all I seek is, where would you like the contribution sent so there won't be any scandals in the newspapers, so as to say? We just really have it at the startup stages now, and just would like to know what would be the easiest way to get the corporate cornucopia to have those funds flow to enable those young people to get there December 21st. And I've been speaking to some people in your office, and whatever works best, we're on board. Second point, Dr. Bird Bennett and President Vitale, we are seriously interested in having student governance, the student govern associations step up in these tumultuous times, and we even have linked with the college student governance where they can get community service credit for some combined meetings.
Mr. Scott, excuse me, can you please conclude?
We'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
With the Teachers Academy, the National Teachers Academy, Dunbar High School, and some cooperating of the city colleges, all of that's ready to roll with just a green light for you for 2013. But I've enjoyed this very interesting morning here for sure, and that means I'm going to really enjoy the holidays after this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
As the next speaker approaches, Speaker 39, Ernestine Stanbury. The next speaker then will be Speaker 41, Josephine Durand, followed by Speaker 42, Marion Joy Tucker, and then Speaker 46, Beryl McQueen, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Ernestine Stanbury. I want to say that I'm very disappointed with the Board of Education, because when I found out that you all do not have geography in the schools, it makes everything seem too ridiculous to not have geography in the schools. I have an organization that's in four countries, and it don't make sense to not have geography in schools, because we're a global society, and like you've got to have time zones, you've got to know all about that. You've got to know about, you're talking about the climate change. They need to keep these courses of geography in the schools. And I know the man is tired of me coming here about the substitute teaching, but I think I should get paid for this here book that you told me that I had to have. I mean, I went to, I've been accepted at colleges, but I really didn't want to do the college thing. I wanted to work with the young people because they're the ones that need it. We know that by what happened here this week. Carol Washington College and Olive Harvey, they said, yeah, forget that. Another thing, Springfield says this here, if you want to be a substitute teacher, even if you go back to school for your Tic Tac work, you're going to still be type 39. That's unfair to your substitute teachers. Are you trying to utilize substitute teachers to wipe out the teachers? Because it makes no sense. I'm already accepted at a, at university level. So, I mean, you're doing what you want to do, that's what Springfield says, but I wish one thing you could do for me, you put geography back in the schools, I beg you. You know, we on the internet, you need geography. I can't even believe the educating system would do that.
Ms. Stanbury, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Put geography back in the schools, do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stanbury.
Our next speaker, please, Josephine Duran.
Good afternoon. My name is Josephine Duran, and I am here today representing Johnson College Prep, a Noble charter school. I was introduced to JCP by my husband and my daughter, Ayesha, after visiting. "Mother," she said, "I want to attend JCP." "You must be kidding me, young lady," I answered. "Why on earth would you choose that little school when there are so many other schools that you can attend?" "Yes, mother," she said, "I want to challenge my intelligence, my character, and endurance. I need a school that will push me past my fears and my unrealistic attitude." The moment that I walked into Johnson College Prep, I knew that this high school would meet all my requirements. I lived in Inglewood, one of the top neighborhoods for violent crime in Chicago. There are times that we are even scared of working the neighborhood. How can this be? A noble school in this neighborhood? What a great commitment to our children. That's why I am thankful they came just in time. Now, my daughter has a sense of security at school. The teachers at JCP gives their email and phone numbers to all the students if help is needed. I have never met more dedicated teachers. The atmosphere is friendly, the expectations are as high as the moon. They have state-of-the-art teaching techniques, teachers and staff.
Mr. Duran, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The Noble network of charter schools is the highest performing charter network. They have transformed the way students learn. Please support providing more opportunities for this safe spaces that encourage academic excellence in the highest needed community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. J.
Good afternoon. I want to start by thanking the board for all that you have done over the years to keep our children safe so that their focus could be on learning and not fear. We will continue to pray for your wisdom as you have to make the tough decisions concerning school safety. My name is Marion Tucker. I am the first male to graduate from college in my family, and I remember how proud both of my parents were the day that I received my diploma. Neither one of them were afforded the option to go to college. They raised 11 of us and managed somehow to save money to help me go to college. Like my parents, I understand the importance of quality public education and how it can benefit you. I am a graduate of Horace Mann Elementary School and South Shore High School on the southeast side of Chicago. It was a neighborhood school, those were neighborhood schools, and I was able to walk to school and walk home for lunch. However, when we were looking at high schools for our daughter, we were discouraged at the lack of options in our neighborhood, which is Auburn Gresham. After doing lots of research, we discovered that Noble was the highest performing non-selective high school and the best option for our daughter. They had a proven track record of working with students of all academic backgrounds and equipping them with the tools to be successful. Unfortunately, at the time, there were not, there were no Noble school in our neighborhood. So we chose to send our daughter to Johnson College Prep, a Noble school in Inglewood. At Johnson, the bar is raised for all students to be scholars, good citizens, and leaders and everything.
Mr. Tucker, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure.
Thank you.
The objective at Johnson and Noble is not just to have acceptance to college, but graduation from college. So I'm happy to report that now there is a Noble campus in Auburn Gresham, and we have encouraged our neighbors to do their research and enroll in their school. So board, please continue to provide more high-quality school options like Noble to the South Side communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you. As the next speaker approaches, Mr. Beryl McQueen. The next speaker then will be Aaron Madoff, Speaker 47, followed by Speaker 48, Ronald Jackson. Then we have Speaker 49, Robert Young, Leslie Recht, and then the last speaker, Jesus Camposano, Speaker 51. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board. Mr. Vitale, Ms. Bennet, my name is Beryl McQueen. I'm on LSC at Dunn Elementary School. Also, I'm with the chairman for the New School Building Committee, and I'm also with the Roseland Community Organization. I have letters here, which I want to talk about, just one fact in this letter, but it's for the board, and it's about a new school for the location at 10845 South Lo. Dunn, okay, right now is in within good standings for the board itself, but we would like a new school primarily because the building that we have is collapitated, and the walls are coming apart. Not only that, our lunchroom is being used as a conference room as well as a gymnasium. It presents a hazard to the schools, and as far as safe passage, we have to send our schools down to Furman to practice basketball during the wintertime, and that becomes a hazard because of the safe haven and the crime in the community. But we feel that a school at Dunn Elementary built on that same property, we have the property, not only that, but it's a safe haven and has the least amount of crime within the Roseland community. So it would be ideal. And not only that, okay, we came off of, Dunn has done good over the years. 15 years ago, we came before the board and requested a new school, which wasn't granted, but Mayor Daley, before he left some 10 years ago, did say that he would make sure that we did get a new school. But we're trying, in our efforts again, to come before the board to ask for a new school. And Dunn, we would like to have a school, okay, built on that property that will accommodate 500 to 700 students. Three years ago, okay, we accommodated 500 and some odd students. That wasn't working, so we were put on probation. A year and a half ago, we were bought off of probation, but in order to do that, we had a teacher-to-student ratio now of 1 to 17. Then we had a teacher-to-student ratio of 1 to 30. But the teaching staff there has done a good job. Not only are we asking for a new school, but we're asking to maintain the same staff that we have now. So with that, I would like to conclude, and please take it into consideration in terms of trying to, considering, building a new school on that property at 10845. And you've heard a lot of people say that they want to put charter schools in the Roseland community. Consider that property.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You know, the challenge for us is always financing them, as you heard earlier.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, we want to make sure that we'll do what we can, okay?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name's Aaron Madoff, and I represent Principal Giannoulis King and Assistant Principal Pete Retzos of the Francis Scott Key Elementary School. I was handed just a few hours ago a notice of discipline that the area schools chief proposes that you ratify. I am very sorry to have to be here. This is the only opportunity I could find to address you. I've already provided you with a nine-page letter with 15 attachments with more than half a dozen sworn declarations explaining why such discipline is inappropriate. The area schools chief has been on a campaign of harassment in an effort to undermine and terminate this new principal. It's believed that her motivation is racial discrimination and retaliation for this principal having testified for a teacher who was wrongfully accused of racism in the past. The charges leveled at Principal Giannoulis King are contradicted by the evidence that were provided by the area schools chief and by additional evidence that we were able to obtain in a remarkably short time. I was given only a few days to investigate, but it appears material that, I don't know how to explain this, I haven't been able to investigate it, but the evidence was literally created after the charges were served and even after the original scheduled prehearing date. I am particularly concerned about an email claiming that a parent called to complain that her daughter was denied admission to the school, when in fact, not only was her daughter in attendance, but she provided a sworn declaration that is in your materials that she never made any such call at all. We were also provided evidence after the predisciplinary hearing and told that the chief of schools has more information, which I don't know what it is. The resolution that I received this morning also addresses issues that were not presented at the predisciplinary hearing or any other such hearing.
Mr. Madoff, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
I ask you to carefully review the material that I have provided you. To reject any discipline against Principal Giannoulis King or Assistant Principal Pete Retzos, or at the very least, provide us some time to address you, and an opportunity to address you directly after having had some time to investigate the charges there. I would also add very briefly that the community is in great support, as is the LSC. You can see that from the letters you have. Principal Giannoulis King, who, as I understand it, has brought the school from a probationary status to Level 2 in just a matter of a few months. But I do ask that you carefully review the materials, and we do ask for an opportunity to do a proper investigation and to address you directly before you issue any discipline. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker then is Speaker 48, please, Ronald Jackson. Our next speaker then is Speaker 48, please, Ronald Jackson.
Good morning, board. In 2010, as an LSC community, as an LSC parent, we was chosen to receive a transformation grant under the understanding that the principal be removed. According to Mr. Crawford and Mr. J, I can't think of the CAO at this time, under Mr. Crawford, he said that we was, we had, we got the grant, we was approved for this transformation grant in 2010. As LSC, we asked about the grant money. All of a sudden, in 2011, they said that the trans, the grant was rewrote by Ms. Sorensen. So, we asked today, as I have been for a number of, over two years, where is the money? If we did not receive that grant, where is the paperwork saying that we was not approved for the grant in 2010? According to Mr. Crawford and Mr. John Thomas, we was approved for the grant. We never found out nothing about the grant. We never know nothing. Only thing we know is we was approved, we asked about it, we was a transformation school. All of a sudden, now, we become a turnaround school. They saying now that the money has been spent. The LSC has not even noticed that this money was spent. Even if there's one or two peoples on that LSC, they still have a right to know. And for Willie to say that I don't speak for the LSC, I speak for the community because now I am a community rep, and they have a right to know. And what I'm saying is that children was closed because programs was removed. LSC did not know that those programs was moved. I even brought this up to Ms. Heinz during the time that they approved the school to be turnaround. I asked Ms. Heinz, "Did you know that these programs was moved?" She said, "No." The former board president who was here, I asked her about the program.
Mr. Jackson, Mr. Jackson, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yeah, she said that she was investigating. So, why is it that no one knows where is this $6 million that we're supposed to get from a transformation now to a turnaround school? So, I'm asking this board to ask them, where is the money? We know that now as fraud is being committed in this money, but yet no one wants to be held accountable for it. So, I ask you, Mr. Bennett, I mean, Bubba Bennett, ask them, where is the money at? Ask them, where is the $6 million money at? And how do we go from a transformation to a turnaround school when we made an improvement within that one year without the money and without these programs? And at that time, when we had all these programs in here, we had over a thousand kids in here. We had computer, we had carpenter, automotive.
Mr. Jackson, your time is up. It's my understanding that actually a full report on that has been provided to you, but if not, maybe we'll need to get you another copy, okay? Thanks.
But the report was for a turnaround.
Thank you. Our next speaker then, Robert Young. Last call for Robert Young. Thank you. Our next speaker then, Mr. President, will be Speaker number 50, please, Leslie Recht.
Good afternoon. My name is Leslie Recht. I work with Alderman Bob Theorette on schools, parks, and CHA issues. We've been working together for the last six years. I provided a number of you with a copy of a letter from the Alderman supporting the new CTE programs that are going to be going into Jones High School. We're very strong supporters of that program. We feel that it's, that it's particularly appropriate because the new Jones is being constructed with TIF funding that was generated from the people who live around the school. And that's an important thing because that's the two neighborhood high schools serving the vicinity around Jones are Crane and Phillips, which have been severely underperforming schools for many, many years. And the people in the area around the school have asked for many years, President Vitale, for a neighborhood school that they can go to that will provide them with safe, quality seats. The CTE programs are just a beginning, and they do not answer the need of the students and the parents in the area for a neighborhood school that they can attend. And a seat is not all equal. There are seats in underperforming, unsafe schools that are empty for a reason. We're asking that you take a look at the data that's been attached to the letter. It shows that the near west side, the near south side is bursting with children based on the current census data up to the age of five. After that, about half of those students and those families leave. And CPS is one of the major urban planning entities in the city.
Ms. Recht, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
You make decisions that make a huge difference in a family's decision to stay in the city or to leave. And so, we ask you to look at the material, work with the community, and work with us together to address these issues and hopefully encourage many more of these families to stay in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Recht, and we all hope Alderman Theorette is doing well. Thanks.
Yes, he's, he's doing well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for Speaker 51, Jesus Campesano. President Vitale, that concludes public participation.
Okay, thank you. James, there are a couple of policy and rules, things that you might want to speak to briefly that are on the agenda.
Yes, sir. There are several items, but in light of the time, I will be brief. This is related to the annual readoption of board rules, modifications, and the deletion of obsolete policies. Many of the changes have to do with negotiations from the collective bargaining agreements and a few areas of, other areas, including school operations and procurement processes. I will touch on just the most notable points. Specifically, in Section 4, the rule change at Section 4.1 includes the additions to the sections dealing with disability plans, paternity leaves, and other classifications. Under that section, the new rules provide for the board to delegate authority to the CEO to revoke resignations and retirements. This is something that's currently dealt with at the board level. Also, at Section 4, we've eliminated the term miscellaneous employees in favor of seasonal employees or part-time employees. And also, at 4.3, the provisions on tenure with regard to teachers is out, is updated to be in line with the collective and bargaining agreement. Regarding certifications and licenses, we've amended the rules to provide that one possible consequence of an employee might not, failing to maintain certifications or licenses for job classification is a layoff in addition to the possibility of termination. Amongst the hiring and appointing, and the hiring, appointment, and status of employees, we have included procedures that provide for the CEO to determine procedures and processes for certain employees to be reviewed for hiring and processing purposes. This does not impact management-level employees for which the board has retained authority Under employee benefit days and paid excuse days, we have added the references to include parental leave, maternity leave, and short-term disability, which will be in line to expanded new benefits provided to employees under the collective bargaining agreement and generally. In Section 5, we have a new section regarding the use of sale of proceeds from real estates. We currently have a policy on this topic that is more than 20 years old and basically provides that proceeds obtained from the disposition of capital properties be returned to capital programs. That old policy is now converted into a rule, and it is amended to provide for the payment of the cost of sales to be used also for, for the purpose, I'm sorry, for the cost of sales to be funded out of those sales. And it provides that when proceeds are received from capital, that is financed in proper, in part, from the use of tax-exempt bonds, those proceeds are to be, to be disposed of only in accordance with the Internal Revenue Code. Moving quickly to Section 6 regarding school uniforms and dress codes, we're converting the old policy into a new rule, authorizing the CEO to issue requirements and procedures to schools to establish a uniform address code. This rule retains the local school council approval of uniform address codes. And then, in Section 7, under the procurement statute, we've provided more flexibility for the chief procurement officer to exercise discretion for purchases between $10,000 and $25,000 for certain debatable items under limited circumstances. And we've clarified the procurement officer's ability to utilize the Illinois School Network, Illinois School Purchasing Network, and similar purchasing cooperatives when prices are more favorable to the district. Finally, from a rule standpoint, there are a number of, I'm sorry, policy standpoint, there are a number of policies that are now obsolete or superseded by the rules changes. They include policies on the use of real estates, fine art standards, Illinois learning standards, world language goals and standards, English as a second language goals and standards, homework policy, risk management policy, textbook and replacement of textbooks policy, long-leave policy, and school uniform address code policy. They are either superseded by the change in rules or otherwise revised. And that's it.
Thank you, James. I, I should just, meant to do this earlier, and to say that Dr. Benin is not with us today because he recently had surgery, and I just want to publicly wish Dr. Benin a speedy recovery. We look forward to seeing him after the holidays. With that, I want to ask fellow board members if they have any questions about any of the agenda items that were not discussed this morning or any reactions to our public comment.
Just one thing, and unfortunately, I don't think they're here, but Mr. Freed and Ms. Zychos, I especially appreciated their comments regarding their wanting to cooperate, and they're likely to be approved as new, new charter schools in our city. And that's what I'm hoping to look for more of, is more cooperation, more joint professional development. I mean, and less talk about simply competing. I'd like to hear more about collaborating. You are there, Mr. Freed. And I appreciate those comments that that, you know, you can't just put your light under a bush or basket. You got to spread it. If we're going to be a better school district and better school system, we've got to, you know, pollinate that across the district, and so it shouldn't be about just competing. It should be about collaborating and raising all boats and having that rising tide do that. You're part of that. You will be part of that.
May I respond?
Quickly. Sure, quickly.
I was just going to mention that we have instructor department who's been asked earlier, he's, you know, the person who was the person who was talking to our schools and that, the elaboration you're describing, the fact that he's part of it, that they started it, and it is a timeline.
I, I hope we institutionally can encourage that more through our application process, through what we require of our partners in education, that they truly act like partners and not, you know. I think it'll help a lot in furthering the debate and discussion that we're currently engaged in across the city.
Other comments or responses? I guess the only thing I would like to say for the record is that, you know, just because people say something a thousand times doesn't make it true. You know, people keep saying, "We have a plan, we have a plan," because work has been done to try to understand our problems and our issues. Frankly, we would be criticized if our people didn't analyze our situation, didn't try to understand the challenges we face, didn't put together reports that help us understand what our situation is. And because that work is done, it does not make it a plan. It does not make it a list of schools. It makes it intelligent analysis that might lead to intelligent decisions. And so, for people to say, "Just because some work was done, it's a plan," is wrong, and saying it over and over again doesn't make it right. With that...
I actually have a question for Dr. Bubba Bennett about something else. And I just, just because I just want her to, I want her to have an opportunity to talk about something she's been doing, and that's on the, we have to approve the continuous improvement plan for the schools. And I know you created an office that's going to be focused on supporting schools that are on probation, and I just wanted you to have an opportunity to talk about it briefly, and that will support the work that's in those continuous improvement plans.
Yes, thank you very much. We have created an Office of Strategic School Support. The very purpose of that office is to, one, very thoughtfully review continuous improvement plans to ensure that, one, those plans are consistent with the vision of the district, two, that are implementable, that we're able to implement it, that they're tied to the financial resources that we need, and that they also address not only the academic, but the affective domain for children, and that's the wraparound support. Secondly, we recognize that there are so many, and we have heard it, and, and I believe this to be true, despite the fact that we've heard it, have been out and seen it, President Vitale, that there are a number of our schools, neighborhood schools, that simply have not received the kind of direct support and resources that we think are necessary to ensure student success. So, that office is specifically designed to focus on our neighborhood schools where we see underperformance in achievement and where we think that we've not really directed and helped principals and the LSCs to focus on using the existing resources to the highest benefit. That office, we think, is going to provide significant leverage for, for our school district to do what we say we're going to do.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? If not, then, Andy, I believe you have...
Actually, I don't have the motion.
Uh-oh.
But I will momentarily. I move for the passage of motion 1219 MO1 and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subject specified in the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll proceed with a roll call. Vice President Reese.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzker.
Yes.
Mr. Sierra.
Yes.
Ms. Saab.
Yes.
President Vitale.
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. We'll move into closed session. All right. The meeting of the Board of Education is reconvened. Madam Secretary, please proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will start with settlements. These items do require a vote. The first settlement is the workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Jesus De Leon, 562. The second report is the approved settlement recommendation in Kathleen Cooley, case number 09-2109. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote. We could take a roll call vote.
Okay, thank, Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Thank you. Vice President Reese.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzker.
Yes.
Mr. Sierra.
Yes.
Ms. Saab.
Yes.
President Vitale.
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. I will continue with other matters. These items do require a vote, and they are: First report, Department of Theater Flan and Flan Professional Services, Inc. Second report, Department of Lewis James, Lori James, Leslie Lamont Bryant, and Love to Serve, Inc. Third report, Property Tax Appeal Refund, authorized settlement for Ashley Capital P Tab Appeals regarding its property tax years 2006 to 2008. The fourth report is the appoint Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law, Julie C. Keller. The fifth report, appoint Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law, Lisa A. Dreischmeyer. The sixth report, appoint Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law, Winter C. N. Jackson. The seventh report, appoint Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law, Kathleen Crawford. The eighth report, transfer and appoint Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law, Libby N. Macy. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with personnel items. These items do require a vote, and they are: First report, approve appointment of Chief Accountability Officer, John Barker. Second report, approve appointment of controller effective December 17, 2012, and ratify all lawful actions taken as controllers since December 17, 2012, Melinda Gildert. Third report, approve appointment of Chief of Innovation and Incubation, Jack J. Elsie, Jr. Fourth report, transfer and appoint Chief of Staff for Academics to the Chief Executive Officer effective October 12, 2012, and ratify all lawful actions taken as Chief of Staff for Academics to the Chief Executive Officer since October 12, 2012, Sherry Ullery. The fifth report is transfer and appoint Chief of Strategic School Supports effective November 26, 2012, and ratify all lawful actions taken as Chief of Strategic School Supports since November 26, 2012. since November 26, 2012, Tracy Martin Thompson. The sixth report, transfer and appoint Chief Teaching and Learning Officer effective December 17, 2012, and ratify all lawful actions taken as Chief Teaching and Learning Officer since December 17, 2012, Annette Gurley. The seventh report is transfer and appoint Chief Officer of Networks, Denise Little. And the eighth report is transfer and appoint Leadership Development Officer, Stephen Garing. The ninth report is Principal Contract C. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will continue with warning resolutions, and these items do require a vote, and they are: Lawrence White, Principal, Kilmer Elementary School; Margot Julianus King, Principal, Francis Scott Key Elementary School; Velma Carlton, tenured teacher, Paul Robeson High School; Ida Gutierrez, tenured teacher, Berry Elementary School. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we'll continue with one other matter, and this item does require a vote: Adopt finding that form of pupils are non-residents of the City of Chicago indebted to the Chicago Public Schools for non-resident tuition. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will continue with items from the board, and these items do require a vote. The first report is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Pamela Brown, tenured teacher assigned to May's Elementary School. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note that neither Pamela Brown nor anyone acting for her made a written request for a state board hearing as required by the Illinois School Code. Council has reviewed the record of notice, charges, and specifications in this matter, and recommends dismissal of Pamela Brown. The board hereby adopts the recommendation. Pamela Brown is hereby dismissed. The second report is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Frank Reese, tenured teacher assigned to Morrell Math and Science Specialty School. And for the record, Mr. President, the Board of Education of the City of Chicago adopts the hearing officer's recommendation, and Frank Reese is hereby dismissed. The third report is the resolution approving the Chief Executive Officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. The fourth report is the resolution approving the Chief Executive Officer's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers. And, Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note that on December 5, 2012, the board members and the Office of the Board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to Board 04-7B2BN105ILCS 5/34-84. Her recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons. She also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand. Vice President Reese has a motion?
I do. I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of November 14, 2012, pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality exists. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on November 14, 2012, shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection at this time.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzker?
Yes.
Mr. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Saab?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. And I believe Board Member Saab has a motion, please.
I do. I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of November 14, 2012, prepared by the board secretary, be approved, and such record of proceedings be posted on the district's website in accordance with Section 2.06b of the Open Meetings Act.
Second.
I'll proceed with a roll call. Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzker?
Yes.
Mr. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Saab?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. I will continue with items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda. And I will begin with resolutions. Mr. President, I would like to note that RS1 just needs to be accepted by the board.
Madam Secretary, please mark received and file.
Thank you. I will continue with resolutions, the policy and board rules on agenda, and these items do require a vote, and they are: RS2, 3, RS4, 5, 6, 7, 8, PO1, and RU1. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will continue with communications, with a communication. This item does not require a vote, and it reads, this is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, January 23, 2013, be held at the Central Administration Building, 125 South Clark Street, Board Chamber, 5th floor. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 a.m. Please note that there is a new process for public participation registration. Visit www.cpsboe.org for more information. Public participation guidelines will also be available for the January 23 board meeting. And advanced registration will open on January 14 at 8 a.m. and end on January 18 at 5 p.m. And you could advance register during the registration period by the following methods: online, by phone, or in person. And as of January 2013, only advanced registration will be available for public participation. The public participation segment of the meeting will begin at the time indicated on the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than the 60 registered speakers for the two hours. Mr. President, I'll continue with additional items on the agenda that require a vote, and they are: EX1 and 2. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Objections from my fellow board members.
So noted for EX1 and EX2. And, Mr. President, on EX3, this is the item to approve and deny call for quality school proposals for charter contract in district schools with 2013 openings. And I would like to note that we will be taking separate votes on the matter, documenting that the Orange School and the Foundation School charter schools are deferred. So there is no action on those two schools. Moving on to the alternative contract school for Camelot, Mr. President, this item does require a vote for the approval.
Madam Secretary, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstention for...
Yes, and I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on the Camelot School. Moving on, Mr. President, for the additional schools that are on the approval list, they are Chicago Collegiate, Intrinsyc, Frazier Prep, Disney Tube Magnet, M.M.S.A. Military, and Rick Over. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the last set of schools, Mr. President, are for the denials, and they are for Alconzar Charter School, Basis, Horizon Science Academies, Belmont, Horizon Science Academies, McKinley Park, Pathways in Education, and Pivot. And, Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on the denials.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstention of Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue then with the additional items that require a vote, and they are: EX4, EX5, 6, 7, 8, OP1. For the record, Mr. President, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on OP1. Moving on to AR1, for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote, except for EX3, since we took that separately.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions for Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll continue with the additional items on the agenda that do require a vote, and they are: PR1, PR2. For the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR2. Moving on to PR3, PR4. On PR5, I would like to note, for the record, an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR5. PR6, PR7, I would like to note, for the record, an abstention for Vice President Reese, for Vice, I'm sorry, for President Vitale on PR7. Moving on to PR8, PR9, 10. On PR11, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR11. Moving on to PR12, I would also like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR12. The next item is PR13, PR14, 15, 16. On PR17, I would like to note, for the record, an abstention for Vice President Reese. Moving on to PR18, and then on PR19, I would also like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR19. And we move on to PR20. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will continue with items on the agenda that do not require a vote, and they are: OP2, ED1, EX9, 10, 11, and AR2. And, Mr. President, these items just need to be accepted by the board.
Madam Secretary, please mark received and file.
Thank you, Mr. President. And there are no further items on the public agenda.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
Second.
Adjourn, thank you.